How are you?
Why don't you lemon be good?
I can do it. It's not, it's not a problem. Yeah. Okay. I was like, I'd be happy if we were done by seven. (laughing) Calling to order, Parowan City Council meeting for March ninth at, uh, twenty twenty-three. It is six o'clock PM. Um, welcome. Glad you're all here and appreciate you being, um, being willing to come out to our meeting and to show interest in our community. It, it means a lot to have you here. Um, we have, um, opening ceremonies that will be offered by Councilmember Topham.
Did you forget my name?
No, I just really didn't want to, I wanted to ask someone else if you do it. You've done it before.
That's okay. I don't mind.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful that we can meet tonight, um, together as a council and a city to do the city's business. Please bless the Spirit to be with us and to guide and direct this, direct us in the ways that would be necessary to make the right decisions for everyone. Thank you for all of this moisture that we are receiving. We are so grateful. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Can you all please stand? Thank you. Okay, do we have any conflicts, um, from the council with personal interests on any of the agenda items?
No mayor.
No.
No.
Okay.
No mayor.
And now we can move to approving the meeting's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting's agenda, striking item number eight in the consent meeting.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving now into public comment. This time has been set aside for you to express your ideas, concerns, and comments, and we will limit those to two minutes per person. Kinda wondered if we were gonna have our basketball team here tonight. I kept thinking, I don't hear them, but maybe they'll come next meeting. We can make the big deal out of them that they deserve.
We'll have to st- extend the invite to them. Maybe they just didn't realize.
Alright, if no one's gonna move, I'm gonna move on. Okay, moving now into the consent meeting. We have items six, seven, and nine that we generally approve with one motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting, striking item number eight with the exclusion of item number eight.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving now out of the consent meeting into the action meeting. Um, I have a recommendation I would like to make to the council for a new airport board member. This person is someone that I think would be a huge benefit to our airport board, and his name is Luke Carlson. He currently is the, um, now I didn't write it down. He's the director of mechanics for SUU Aviation. And, um, he is here in the audience. If you don't know him, I think you all do, so I would just, uh, like to ask for your approval for him to join that board.
Luke, why don't you stand up?
Good break.
Howdy. Thank you for being willing to accept, um, accept.
I have a reservation, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor. Uh, I had Luke in school and I, I really have to... Just, just kidding. He's a, he's a great, he's a great, yep. He's a great kid, uh, great man. Sorry, Luke.
He's got a lot of experience. He's worked with the, when the Cowans were spraying, and he was, he was good. So, I mean, he, he's got a lot of experience.
And he's been out there and knows, knows the airport inside and out, so he's an excellent choice, Mayor.
I'll make a motion to approve Luke Carlson for the airport board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you for being, for being willing.
Okay, now, moving into our work meeting, um, item number eleven is the Shade Tree Lilac Ash Bore Treatment Plan, um, and Dan Justin will present that information.
I'm gonna share some time on this. The, the mayor's also spent a lot of time working on this. Um, the, uh, I, I don't know if everybody's aware, but we have quite a problem with a particular pest that is killing some of our trees. The lilac ash bore is the name of the moth that is killing a lot of the ash trees in town. Um, the, the tree committee is very concerned for good reason. Our trees are, I think, the way our, our arborist on the, on the tree committee puts it, they're the one asset that the city has that grows in value, um, and, um, anyways, so there's, there's a bunch of trees that are, that have this problem, that are on city property, and, uh, the tree committee met and trying to figure out, um, what the best way to, to deal with this is. Um, there's lots of different treatment options, um, and there's a small window of time right in the spring when, when you can, when you can deal with this particular, um, pest. And if we don't, um, we're, we're probably gonna lose these trees. There's also gonna, we also know that there are trees that are on private property, trees that are on school district property, so we're trying to update our, um, I don't know what you call it, inventory map of trees. And, um, we've reached out to three different, um, tree experts that actually do this and, and, and looking at options. Um, my hope is that we can come up with an option that won't take a, a budget amendment, just that we can do with our existing budget. Um, the mayor spent a lot of time on the phone with three of them, um, in the, in the past couple of days, um, and essentially you can do everything from, you know, removal of limbs, um, you can core the tree and, and, and put a chemical that will, that, that goes through the tree. You can inject it, you can pour it around the roots. The city has done a few things in the past, um, which we're gonna look at. But one of the reasons why we wanted to bring it up in city council is if, um, when the city decides of how we're gonna move forward with this, we'll invite, if there's somebody in the public that wants us to treat a tree, if we go with a low-cost option that is not, you know, hundreds of dollars per tree, if we go with a low-cost option and we're already out there, for us to, to, to hit another tree or two while we're out and about, um, if, if the property owner be willing to sign, sign a liability waiver, um, we'll potentially include those, some of those private trees while we're working. So, we're just looking at the best options. Our, our window will open up sometime around the first of May, of April, um, in that timeframe. We'll have about a month where you can do this work, um, and not, not to scare people, this is a real, this is a real, um, issue, but there is another, um, bug that is basically working its way across the United States that is even worse than this one, and it'll wipe out, it's like an extinction level event for, for any of that type of tree, and...
In Colorado now.
As far as Colorado as it's working its way over, so this is kind of a dress rehearsal for that, um, and, um, we're looking to, you know, our arbori- arborist says, one of the wor- worst things that you can do is plant all the same type of tree everywhere. They like to have a really diverse population of a lot of different trees. It, I learned a new term. I'm not a tree guy, right, and yet it's right in code. City manager has all this responsibility when it comes to their trees. But I learned a new term and I thought it was kind of cool, and he kept referring to our trees as our urban forest. And it is what it is, and there's a lot of, um, benefits to what we have, and sometimes we just don't think about our trees, but they are, they're very important. When they, when they die, now you realize, oh dang, this big gigantic living thing that is now this liability and, um, would have been better if we could have just preserved it for, for very low cost, when you think about the investment. So, we're looking at options. That's my, Mayor, would you, I probably just covered it badly.
No, that was great. So, we should...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that there's, because of the restriction on the chemical, we're gonna have to hire somebody that has a chemical license. It's not gonna be able to be done in-house unless you use the certain method. And so that's, you know, and Ryan, um, Johnson is, his title is State Arborist. He is a urban arborist. That's it. Urban arborist for the, uh, uh, State Division of, what, Forestry, Fire Forestry.
Yeah.
So, anyway, he's the urban forest, and he gave this presentation to the committee, and, uh, it's something we have to act on timely.
The only thing I would add is there were like four choices, and the choice that is clear is the, it's a nicotine-based, so doesn't get into the water system, things like that. It's the timing that you do it, how you do it, how you treat it, all of that, so that's why we would contract it out. Um, it's commonly used. Some of the communities, simple one like Foothills, they do it all the time. Their trees don't have, they, the lilac ash bore. A lot of community members have treated their trees, um, and they, you know, they say basically that was a big part of the demise of our trees in front of the high school. Um, that's why that happened and part of it. And so, yeah, just more of an introduction to the council, just because this isn't something that, um, we're gonna just forget about. It needs to happen this year, and then after this year, we'll figure out, um, a plan moving forward to do a better, kind of a maintenance plan for our trees, but this is the first step to that.
And, and, and on that topic, we'll probably come up with a plan to, um, replace, to remove and replace some of these, these oldest, weakest, deadest ones that are, that are probably not gonna survive this event anyways, um, and in a perfect world, we, we'll be able, cause there is some grant money, and we do allocate a certain amount of budget every year for this process, so if we can kind of remove and replace and not have to do everything at once and just experience this m- major effect of losing a whole bunch of trees all at the same time, then we can replace them with, with different, um, species and, and really, um, really protect what, the, what we have, so.
So, it's wind erosion and fire protection, and I, I really appreciate it. I, I was in a, a conference and, um, Riddle, I don't remember what his first name is, but gave a present, Ryan, Ryan Riddle gave a presentation, and so people who think, oh, well, the trees, you know, I'm not a tree hugger, and I'm not saying like that in any, any way other than just the way di- different people's minds consider trees. He's like, it doesn't have anything to do with that. It's an asset. It's a, it's got, um, it's got costs associated with it in terms of the value of these trees, and they protect your, they protect your land. They're, you know, they help with erosion, wind, and fire, and you wanna keep your trees.
They also improve your health, the air quality.
Yeah, so if you have any more questions, I feel pretty versed. I think our whole tree committee does as well at this point, so, um, you're welcome to come out to that meeting or ask anyone on the committee or, or, as I said myself, and I'll answer my que- the questions as best I can. But I think we'll have more information as we get these evaluations done, so. So, that's that item. If there isn't any other, the council, you have any questions about that? Okay. Um, moving to item number twelve. This is the pump track introduction discussion by Billy Callaway and Stephen Ward, or just Stephen Ward?
Just Stephen Ward.
Okay.
Billy has something way more important than this, so he's not gonna make it tonight. So, I dropped some packs off for you guys. Me and Billy and the Public Works guys have been kinda looking into this a little bit, and we're wanting to kinda get some approval before we go really deep into it and waste a bunch of time, but we're looking at doing a pump track here in town, all in-house. Well, the first series of it would be in-house. Um, the location...
Can you talk into the microphone a little bit more?
Sorry, is that better?
You're good.
So, the location we're kinda shooting for is the Meeks Pond.
Like where at, at the Meeks Pond?
So, on the, on your packet there, there's a couple different locations. There's the, a longer one down along, oh, I don't even know what streets those are. The, the spot that we graded off this year, this last year here, and then there's another spot up where the garden used to be. Um... So, this is kind, would be like a multiple-stage thing. The city would kinda handle the first stage of it, and then we would dig into getting some grants and have someone else come in and maybe add a section to it and expand it. Um, we've done a little bit of digging into what it would actually cost the city. Um, we called Western Rock, and then we got a hold of Parowan Rock as well. On the top coat is what's gonna be where the money's gonna get involved. The rest of it's all stuff that we can source from the city that we have already. We can screen it or haul it, all that kinda thing. The top coat is roughly eight to ten bucks a ton. So, we're looking around like thirteen hundred on the, the higher side of things is what it would cost to actually top coat the size of track that we're wanting to put in. Um, other than that, I got, we got a few people that are willing to donate hauling some dirt as well. Um, English Trucking, that they donate a day's worth of hauling. If, if we sourced it out of town, if we went out of Cedar, it might be a little bit different story just cause that's a really long run for them, but...
Mary Hanley really wants to come up. Yeah.
So, so a pump track's a, a bicycle track that's a series of bumps and berms. It's not big jumps and super dangerous stuff. It's just more for younger kids to ride. It's, it's not extremely crazy. Yeah, kinda like BMX style track. Yeah, has got any questions?
I looked it up too.
Yeah. They're a new thing. Like, they're super, they're getting super popular. They're all over the place. What got us started is we were spending some time in St. George at theirs and took all our kids down there, and it was, it was awesome. It was a blast. So, we're like, we could do this fairly cheap and have it here in town. How do you guys feel about the location? That's our biggest hurdle, I guess.
Well, let me ask you, how much, how much dust is created by...
So, once you put this top coat on, there's pretty much no dust. You don't even need water to maintain it.
Does it get muddy when it rains?
It, it will get muddy. It would be a, a dry situation only, and it would have to be signed as that as well.
So, then if it rained on it?
It would get shut down.
Would it ruin the track? I mean, not ruin the track, but make it...
Like ruin the surface of it?
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't. It's, it's all engineered for that. So, wh- once you lay it down and, and get it all prepped, it, it turns pretty hard. It's almost like concrete. It's, it's super, super hard.
If I'm not mistaken, Diane and Callaway put a picture of Billy doing it down in St. George on Facebook.
I bet they did. Yeah, we've, we've all gone down there, enjoyed it, and the whole Public Works is behind it. We're all thinking that it would be something pretty cool to do around here.
Stephen, you asked about the, uh, location.
Mm-hmm.
That would have to be evaluated. There's like four entities that are involved there.
Right.
And (cough) there are other options. I've been thinking about this since, so we need to look at all options. There are some other options.
Right, oh yeah.
And so we need to look at every option that there is because, uh, we're going to have a, a meeting with this group, and so I was gonna bring this up.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So, so they, they will have to have input.
Right on. Yeah, so let us know. We're, we're all about it. We're all behind it and are willing to do what we gotta do to make it happen.
Li- liability-wise, what does that fall on the city as far as that?
So, first of all, I just, I just had grabbed a, a street view, and I know I can get some other pictures. This is the one that's down in Santa Clara. It's basically across from the, the high school there in Santa Clara. Um, you can get an idea of, um, it's, I mean, it's, it's really kind of a dirt, um, track. They have some, some of these other, um, little, um, things that they've built to go along with it, but you can see, you can see the kids that are on there playing. Um, and I know that they have, they have some other stuff. So, you can see that, I mean, this is the type of thing that could be done, um, very cheaply. You could put a whole bunch of money into it. Um, there's, there's basically a mix of, there's a special mix of dirt where you use, you use silt, clay, and concrete, and you, and you make a very specific mix and build your track out of it, and then it's, it's a really hard track with these, with these certain things in it. Um, would require maintenance. This is the type of thing that our Public Works could, could even go and build if you wanted to. Where they start costing money is, you know, when you start putting fences around them and, and things like that. But that's just an idea of, of what, what they're talking about, so somebody could, could get an idea, and I was going to, I think they have some more.
There's a whole bunch of grant, grants out there for this kinda thing that we could easily match with labor and equipment and stuff like that and get quite a bit of money for not a whole bunch of...
There's a good picture.
Money out of the city's budget, you know.
So, liability, obviously, it's gonna be liability, um, similar to, um, our parks right now typically, and I, and I believe on the park down in Santa Clara, there is a large sign that talks about...
There's a picture in your packet of that sign, just so you guys can see what it said, what they posted on there.
Justin, did you have something to add to that?
You have insurance. The insurance covers it. You carry on with your life. Is there liability there yet? And you can put a sign up all you want. It isn't gonna make a difference, cause it's mostly minors riding there, and minors can't waive their rights, so... And a parent can't waive the minors' rights for them, so there's liability there, but you carry insurance and...
Justin, a question on that liability. Would that be similar to, you know, like the pond, the Meeks Pond? If you fenced it, you increase your liability, and if you don't, that's the understanding I have, and if it isn't fenced, then it's just like any other park or any other risk that there is.
Yeah, so that's a case that was up in Salt Lake, and they had a little kid that unfortunately got through a broken fence and drowned in the Jordan River. And, uh, and they sued, and the city basically said, look, we're not liable because it's a, the Jordan River is a natural, natural circumstance, and the court said, you're right, except that you chose to fence it, and because you chose to fence it, now the parents had a right to rely upon that fence, and therefore, because they relied upon the fence and you allowed the fence to deteriorate, you are liable city. So, in that case, would've been better if they hadn't, but that was a natural event. Here, you're not sponsoring a natural event. If you had just natural land the city owned and people went out and rode on it, you probably don't have any liability there. This, you probably have potential liability, and we should put up our signs that say, bike is your own risk and all those things, but the reality of it is, is a minor child cannot waive their rights, and a parent cannot waive a child's, a minor child's rights to a potential injury. Um, it's already been the Supreme Court. I'll just be honest with you. We took the case up in a former firm, and we lost, and we lost on public policy, which is, you know, you don't lose very often on public policy, but the court basically said, look, public policy, we're not gonna allow you to, to waive a minor child's rights, and so that child retains those rights, but the fact of the matter is, that's why you get insurance and...
So, there wouldn't be need of fencing then?
Nope, no need of fencing.
If you, if you do fence, something like that there, it was kinda nice looking.
Yeah, some kinda natural that kinda blends in. That's the whole thing, is we could make it blend in with the landscape that is there already and incorporate some native stuff. That's kinda the ponds thing, you know, and bring it back to life.
I thought, I like the idea of giving kids something to do. I really do.
Well, and how many complaints do we get of kids riding like where they shouldn't be and doing things that they shouldn't be with their bikes? Well, let's give them an option of a place to go and to do it relatively safely. I like, I really like this idea.
I do, I do. I...
And this is the first time I've, I didn't even know anything like this really existed, so...
Question, now, now I'm going by bad memory. Is that land down there was donated to the city? No, it was, well, it was purchased.
Yeah, no, I think Zona Topham donated it.
Yep.
It is donated. Is there anything in there that says that we can't?
It may be. That's something that need to look at.
Well, when we, when we, when we did the pond, we had to get, (cough) there's a forty-year conservation easement on that property, and that was what was necessary.
They shortened it to thirty now.
What?
They shortened it to thirty.
Well, initially, it was a forty-year conservation easement. We got that. We had to ensure that it wouldn't be sold, and then when we got the grants for some of the work down there, one of the things was that it was not to be, uh, a grass park. They wanted it to be, maintain the natural, uh, habitat. So, that's the only question I, I have. I think this is a great idea. I'm just, as David mentioned, I'm just maybe concerned about that particular location with, with what all of the stakeholders in that. I think we've got places around where we could...
Sure, and we can look at it and see that there are options there, and if it's, you know, amenable to the...
If they all agree for it, go for it, but if it's not...
Well, and if it, the condi- if it is allowed.
Yep, exactly.
And then, but there are other options, and I mean, yes, I think we're all in agreeance that, uh, this is a good thing. It's just a matter of where to do it.
Right. We had this one right here that Dan's pulling up was the other one that we were kinda looking into, out by the ball fields.
Like where we just built that?
Yep.
Big old sewer?
Just in front of the... I wouldn't call it sewer.
Well, I didn't know what to call it, like the retention pond.
Dave's new swimming pool.
Retract.
Yeah, and it can be my new bike part, pump part. (laughing) Yeah, one time.
And, and it's really not, I mean, depending on, on what you do to it, not a real big budget line item. I mean, we could probably, especially where Public Works guys are wanting to donate their own time and, and, and help to, to help build it. I mean, we could probably build this thing for five grand. If we, if you go put a, a fence around it to make it look nice, that's when you're gonna start spending some money. Um, op-, you know, operation, maintenance, it's gonna need to be patched now and again. Um, again, it's not like this, it's not like... And, and if you look at the, the pictures down in the, the park down in St. George, they've, they've taken it to the next level. Um, they actually have, um, multiple sections. They have one section where they get into kind of these aggressive, like X-Games type things, and according to these guys that are down there, the kids aren't on those. Like, that's like a pretty advanced, and nobody's really riding on those. Those are gonna take some money to construct and build. They do have some, some basic little, what did you call them? The little, um... They do have some- some basic little, what did you call them? The little, um-
Like berms, like ribbons or like-
Ribbons.
Mhm.
They have some of these little structures that are built that aren't- aren't aggressive, they're not real dangerous, that could be added through time, um, and- and could be built. I think you can see-
I hurt myself.
Yeah, this is in a different location here, um, but really, from what these guys have said, I've never been there, but you go down there on a Saturday and it just gets cram packed with families that are there playing.
It definitely is.
There's a couple other, I was thinking, you know, by the airport, the city owns some property out there.
Mhm.
But there's that one that we traded for, the English property.
Yeah.
But it's busy road next to it.
Yeah, that was our- our access was the whole, was one of our main things, is the kids can get there safely. That's-
Mhm.
Kinda what we're looking at, you know, where they can leave school and ride their bike there and not-
Not go across.
Be in danger, you know, yeah, nothing crazy to cross. That's why the- the pond is so good, 'cause you don't cross the main street-
It's a good location.
The whole way there, you know, so...
And if you ever do bike paths or trails there, I mean, that'd be a good place to go.
Oh, yeah, and it's big enough you could do multiple stages, like we were saying. We can start with something small, and if it's- if it's great, then we'll go out for some grants and, you know, this was all granted for- to Saint George, this whole park was, so, pretty cool.
We just didn't wanna bring it to budget- budget discussions without kinda some discussion and some, you know, let these guys share what- what their idea was and mull it around a little bit before we were deciding whether to put a number on a budget, you know?
I'd say, look at it. Let's go for it.
I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. I just think location, as David was saying, that's our- that's the big issue.
Yeah, we just need to decide where.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and you can involve us with those meetings if you want. We'd be glad to do it.
Yep.
Do you know those geeples since your Meeks Pond?
Yeah, we're gonna be-
We're gonna be meeting, yeah.
Cool. All right, on, you guys got any other questions?
We did have a person that wanted to comment, our citizen of the year, yes?
Some of these kids like to ride on one wheel with the front end up in the air, and they don't go slow, they go extremely fast. And I hope the fencing and those kinds of things, somewhere or another, we can keep them out. Because otherwise-
They'd tear it up.
They'll tear it up.
You know, and they drive so, so terribly fast. So, that's the only thing I encourage, is that we look at the prevent-
We- we do already have a problem at the Meeks Pond. It's a little bit of an attractive nuisance. It doesn't look like this right now, of course, we all know it's just cleared. And we do have, um, we have motorized vehicles that are getting out there sometimes. We need to do something with this property, even if it's not this. We need to do something and- and also add some signs. Um, Dr. Roth has requested repeatedly that we put no motorized vehicles on the new signs that we put, and- and we'll- we'll order those. I think that's a good idea. We need to figure out something we're gonna do here that we- what it was originally designed for with this- with this collective group. The school district is not, has stated that they're not going to participate with classes anymore. So, wh- what is our vision for this, if not the pump park, so anyways?
Well, even if you did, in the park there, couldn't you, if you wanted natural habitat, maybe in between the- where the track is, maybe we could do the natural habitat, kinda keep it-
Oh, yeah.
You know, something like that, too.
And we- we all built this as kids, you know, we- we did it, and now it's- we're able to- to bring it back again to the kids, you know?
Luke? We spent lots of time down there, didn't we, Stephen?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Luke, didn't we? We built that sucker.
Just the full circle of that project I liked, what you just said, Stephen, is they- they did that when they were their age, and now they've got kids, and they wanna have things for their kids, and this is something they could see being able to do for their community, and really would like to be able to do that.
Cool.
Cool.
You're gonna work harder on this than you did down there when we were doing it the first time?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
For sure.
Luke, no more hiding up in the barn.
Yeah, so let us know if you guys have any other questions and kinda give us a direction, if it's something you wanna dig into or- or not, you know?
Well, I think we-
I think we're all in agreement. We all wanna do it.
I think we wanna do it, it's just a matter of where.
It's a matter of where.
All right, we'll- we'll keep going, then we'll keep digging in.
So, maybe you can keep him in the loop on your meeting, and then maybe if it's beneficial, he could come to the meeting?
Mhm, yeah, for sure.
And let's get it rolling.
I don't-
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, now moving to item thirteen. This is the bridge up- update discussion by Dan Jesson.
Okay, just to bring everybody up to speed, um, real quick recap. Um, twenty nineteen, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of- lot of plans. I'm not gonna go into all the detail, but the city applied for a grant, um, to, um, to deal with this bridge. It was really brought to our attention. Of course, you can see it- it- the- the cr- the crumbling, especially of the sides. The actual structure isn't quite as bad as what it looks like when you're looking at the road on the sides. Um, but it is- it is an issue. Um, it was brought to our attention when we had the Brianhead, um, floods, uh, scar, the burn scar, and the additional flooding that- that really, most of the bridges on this, um, the Perrin Creek, which- which floods, um, are undersized for a one hundred year event, probably undersized for a fifty year event, not to get too technical, but, um, the, um, the NRCS, National Resource Conservation Service from the USDA, um, and with the county, uh, has- has done a study and making plans to improve this whole channel and, um, including the breakwater and everything. In that study, they said that a one hundred year event, if it hits the watershed, would bring about four thousand eight hundred and ten cubic feet per second of water through- out through the canyon. Um, this bridge will handle about twelve hundred. So, that was part of it, plus also the fact that it is- it is old. When I fifteen shuts down and they tra- route traffic through, we all collectively kind of worry as all those heavy trucks are going over that bridge. So, um, there was a lot of discussion about, um, the location. The reason that the location is in question is because in order to span the flood channel, if you're gonna get grant money to pay for it, it needs to be built for the flood channel that should be there at its pro- at its proper width and depth. In order to do that, you have to be a- build a taller, longer bridge than we currently have. And so, um, this location is- is not optimal, um, not that it hasn't worked for all these years, but it is on a curve. To build a curved bridge is much more expensive than building a straight bridge, not to mention, you know, bridges freeze faster than the surrounding, and so it's on a curve. That's a potential problem. You have utilities galore. It looks like a spaghetti bowl of utilities around here. And so, um, three locations were- were- were brought, um, to the city. I don't wanna say brought to the city, but the city hired Jones and DeMille to consider three locations, and they basically did this. The first option was to build the bridge exactly where it is. Um, and the second option was to make the bridge straight and to go in the same location and basically turn it on a ninety degree angle. That would require, um, purchase of property slash potentially, the words you never wanna utter as a public servant, is eminent domain, 'cause that bridge would come straight into this property and really turn right at this house and elbow out. The third option was to move it to One Hundred West and coming across- move across here. Um, if you look at the county's parcel, uh, locator, you can see the property that the county owns, that the city owns, sorry. And, um, the- the city basically owns the right of ways through, um, this flood channel on most of these, come on, there we go. So, the city owns the right of way as though the street would continue through on One Hundred West, on Two Hundred West, all the way down to Old Highway Ninety One, on Three Hundred West, all the way down to Old- Old Ninety One, and then on Six Hundred West. Um, and of course, Six Hundred West is a street that does go through. Um, everybody's probably familiar with that. And, um, that is the one that goes through without a bridge, and of course, shuts down when there's water present, right? Anyways, um, I'm not sure. I wasn't here at the time, but I believe that the goal was to keep the road going as close to the current, um, um, place of crossing as is possible. I'm not sure. Um, but that's what happened at the time. I believe three on the council were here and voted. Weren't- wasn't Matt and Jim and Dave?
No.
Who's?
Not on this. It was before me.
Was it?
Mhm.
I don't, I guess it was just me.
No, I think you-
No.
It was twenty nineteen is when the vote was made.
Was it nineteen?
Yep.
All right.
At least that's what the minutes show that I read, so anyways, the decision was made and voted on for that location. There was a lot of public comment. It affects a lot of people, um, anywhere you put it. And so, the decision was made at that time to keep- to- to move the bridge to One Hundred West. That was- that was the vote, right? Um, not a lot has happened. Of course, we entered COVID. Um, this got somewhat put to the back burner. Um, recently, we, um, have restarted the process. Um, we signed a federal aid agreement, which I mentioned in- in previous comments, that starts the- the process. UDOT, um, I- I don't wanna say this in a mean way, they finally got around to assigning a, um, a project engineer, and, um, we- and that- that gentleman, his name is- is, um, oh, it just slipped my mind, Ruston, it's a weird name, Ruston Anderson. He works with a company called Wall, um, consulting.
He's actually the project manager, so he's not the engineer, but the manager.
He is- he is an engineer, but his whole job is to be a project manager hired by UDOT to shepherd the way through the process. This is an off-system bridge, meaning this is not a UDOT bridge or a UDOT project per se. It is a local government project. But UDOT is part of the funding. Um, the- the main source of the funding is the Joint Highways Committee, which is federal dollars, but UDOT shepherds the process. Um, we are to a point where we need to write a check to UDOT for, um, for part of our match. Um, the- the city, given the current funding, has to match about three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars towards this project, which is a fraction of the cost. It's currently around a five million dollar bridge. Um, we have to- we have to pay that money to UDOT. They put it in a special account in different increments, ten percent here, fifteen percent there, um, as we go through the design process, as they go through environmental work, and, um, there's another process. I don't remember off the top of my head what it is. And then, when it comes to construction, we pay the balance of our match dollars, right? So, right now, we have to- we're at a point where, um, we have to now put fifty-some odd thousand, fifty-three thousand into this account where UDOT will have control of it, so then they can meter that out, um, as we move through the process. Now, as we've- as we got to that point, um, we- my- my whole point of bringing it up and putting it on the agenda is that we have a gut check moment, and we decide for once and for all if this is where we wanna have this location. And I wanna bring up some information maybe we didn't have back then. Um, what we have learned is we've got the federal aid agreement, and I've read through it, is this. The- the project will pay for the bridge only. It does not pay for any work on the intersections on either side. It doesn't pay for the widening of One Hundred West. Um, the city has to add One Hundred West as a major collector on our ma- on our master plan in order to, um, qualify just for the funding of the- even the bridge, because you can't- couldn't put it there without that being designated. One Hundred West is not built to the spec. Um, when you build a major collector, you build a r- a- a road at a different, um, like, different substrate of- of gravel and everything underneath the road. You're gonna build the asphalt to a different thickness and to a different width. The- the width is there as far as, um, what- what the city has a right of way. You know, we have the full width we need, but the road itself is just a narrow, it's just a residential road. Uh, we would have to, um, pay for the improvement of the intersection at One Hundred West and Two Hundred South. You know, you think- you think in the event that you have, um, tr- you know, in the rare event, but it happens, probably once a year or so, that the I fifteen gets shut down and they route traffic through, you're gonna have semis turning here. Even- even on normal days, you're now gonna have traffic going through there that's gonna need a wider turn. This- this intersection is gonna have to be improved, maybe even with a deceleration lane and acceleration lane, just so that you have the flow. Same thing with-
Will UDOT help with that, where that's a state highway?
Um, I think we could probably go after UDOT grants for that intersection, but because Two Hundred South is an intersection, just like we're asking them for help as we look at these other intersections, right? Um, they- uh, over here on Old Highway Ninety One, that's not UDOT Road. That's completely on the city. Um, it's the city road until the end of the- the, um, municipal limits, and then it's county's responsibility. Right here, it's on our Class C road, um, thing, and we have to maintain that road. It also won't pay for, and this is a big deal, it will not pay for the removal of the old bridges, because both of these bridges are undersized and would have to come out. It will not pay for the rebuild of this intersection, which will now be a T intersection. It won't pay for the rerouting of this road as it needs to circle around in here to serve these citizens, so they have access to their property. So, there's a fair amount of cost besides the matching dollars of the grant that the city is gonna be on the hook for if we put it on One Hundred West, and I don't know as we knew that at the time. Um, if you- if you have the bridge on Main Street, part of the construction is gonna be the removal of the old bridge. You don't have intersections to upgrade because it's on that route, right? So, but you do have a lot of utilities to deal with. Um, you have to deal with new elevations on the bridge as you approach the bridge. Um, there will be impact to citizens for sure, anyb- anyplace you go. It is also important to note that we have a lot of the same utility conflicts on One Hundred West as we do on Main Street. Um, one of my questions, and for those that were here, maybe you remember, I'm wondering if Three Hundred West was ever considered. I'm also wondering if Six Hundred West was considered. Um, Six Hundred West is actually already on our master plan as a major collector. It's this green line right here. So, it's- it's designated as a major collector. Um, it's possible that you would build even a different style of bridge. One of the- one of the parts of the process as we go through this, our next step is to go through like a three-month process to select a design engineer. Um, welcome to federal- federal stuff in UDOT. Um, takes about three months. You select an engineer, not on the basis of price, and will probably spend, according to Ruston, anywhere from five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars to design this thing. When they design it, they're required to design three options, but they will not design three locations. They'll design three different versions of- of different bridges at that location, so, and that's a good thing. So, you make sure that you've kind of thought about all of the, I mean, there's different types of bridges, you know, steel arch bridges, um, concrete boxes. There's, you know, spanning bridges. I- I- I'm not a bridge guy, but, um, they will do that for us, and so, wherever location that we say go for it. So, that's kind of a- the- the information that I have, um, all of the new information, um, and I just kinda wondering where the council wants to go with this. Um, do we- we- we do have a decision that has been made by the council, and we can- we can proceed. Um, but this is not, it wouldn't be a good time to then later back out and say, "Well, maybe we should've considered a different location," you know, knowing this. It's, if we move forward now, we're gonna write a check, and we're gonna hire a design team, and they're gonna start designing a bridge. And they could get to the point where they design the bridge, and we pay all of our match dollars, and then we could stop at that point if we don't like it. But we do need a bridge, and it- and- and we're not gonna want to have gone that far down that road and then stop and not build anything, 'cause now we're back to square one, plus all that money we've spent, so...
Well, I was- I remember when they had the meeting about it, and I don't know if anyone else does. I don't know if you were here, Larry, then? But they were gonna keep the bridge intact and put barriers up so vehicles couldn't go, so they could still have the bicycle and the runners.
The only problem with that is if you have a large flood-
Right, I know what you're saying.
The bridge itself will not take the-
It becomes the, yeah.
In order to get the federal grant for the- the channel, you have to remove any impede- impediments to the flow.
Oh, I- I understand that.
And that bridge does not in any way, shape, or form meet the requ- And that bridge does not in any way, shape or form meet the requirements for that channel.
And I think the.
That was why they told us it had to come out.
The important thing to know today is we do know a lot more than we did then. I mean, we've had the, the different studies, we've had a lot happen between then and now that we have information that we didn't have.
Study didn't exist then, we were ju- in fact, if you read through Jones and DeMille, they were saying it's gonna have to be bigger than it is. And, and we will know soon what amount of CFS we have to plan for.
Come and tell us what it, what size it had.
We now know that, sorry, I ma- I interrupted you.
Well, and then just looking at those other costs associated, we didn't know all those, I mean, I don't think we did. So, that, in, the person who met with us, the project manager, just said, there's ways around it, I mean, you, you don't have to panic. But you're, you're underfunded with everything that you're gonna be trying to do here. And so, I think that is the point of this, of this conversation in this meeting is this gut check. You know, did we really look at three hundred, did we really look at six hundred? Because it looks like, and, you know, we took it a step further and called, um, Jones and DeMille and said, what do you think? And they're like, it's worth, it's worth talking about, because six hundred and three hundred potentially would be a less expensive project.
But you'd still have the cost of removing the old bridge.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Is there any way that they can, you can reevaluate this and get that cost included in the construction of the new bridge?
So, I asked that specific question, is there any way we wrap this in? There's two elements to that, one, and the mayor just used the word, underfunded. So, this is a guy who, this, this engineer, this project manager, he's like the bridge guy that they go to a lot when they have a bridge project in Utah. Um, they've just done recent bridges, he said, I've been involved with three different bridges in the past like two years. And we all know what inflation has done, and, and he says, I suspect that you're probably underfunded. And, and we're over here going, what does that mean? Because the federal aid agreement, this is what it says, when you reach the end of the federal funding, Parowan City is on the hook for one hundred percent every penny above that. That's scary, right? And so, but he said, don't panic, this is what happens, if you get in, we do this w- design work, they're gonna come back in different stages of design. You know, at a ten percent stage, a, like a, he, he, I didn't mean to use the wrong words, fifty percent, seventy percent, ninety percent design, right? Um, and, and one of those early stages is cost estimation. And if it looks at that point like we are, we need a six million dollar bridge instead of a five million dollar bridge because of everything that's happened with cost and steel and, and all these things, we can then stop, we can go back to joint highways. And, and, and he made it sound like, yeah, you go back to joint highways, they reckon, you know, they're, they're vested in this project, they wanna get it built. UDOT really wants to get this built, because we are their insurance policy when the freeway needs to get closed. That's why they're even doing this. And he says, you go back and you get more money. Um, so, but, they will not fund the removal of the old bridge. And I said, well, so what happens if we don't take out the old bridge? And he goes, oh, maybe we could c- get it covered, if there's money left over, maybe we could get it covered, saying that it now threatens the new bridge unless you remove it. And he said, but that's a long shot and I can't promise that, but that's assuming there's money left over. And then later he's telling us, you're probably underfunded, so the chances of there being money left over, I would say are probably. None, but not none, low.
Coming up to that meeting, all I ever heard was it's fully funded, so, I mean, that was.
Well, it was funded in twenty nineteen dollars, right?
Yeah.
That's four years ago. And the pandemic and stupid supply chain problems and, yeah.
Have you talked to Kelly Stones with Public Works about six hundred or three hundred?
Kelly has been out of the country. And then, I have been running around with my hair on fire this week, I have ran into Kelly once and, and then.
But Kobe was in the meeting with us, he was in the, meeting the entire time with the, um, with a project manager.
I don't think that, um, Kobe was involved early on, I think it was mainly Kelly and Cleve. I do really wanna pick Kelly's brain about this, but I can't tell you.
About three hundred or six hundred?
He said, yeah, I don't know, sounds okay to me, like, there wasn't a lot, so, I wanna show, well, no, I won't. Um, but I'll tell you, um, we have, we have a major high-pressure gas line that comes through here. We have multiple city water lines, including the Penn Stock, Justin, Justin, sorry Jeremy. The Penn Stock runs through here, which doesn't show on our utility viewer, we have power lines, we have s- two sewer lines. Um, there is a lot of utilities that are in this area on three hundred south.
On three hundred, one hundred?
Three, you mean?
No, on three hundred south.
On three.
Yeah, three hundred south.
Which, if you come down to six hundred, you have some overhead power lines that cross like this. You really don't have the utility concern. But, I want you to imagine for a second that this part of the city is cut off from this part of the city. Anybody who lives here would have to drive back to three hundred or drive back to six hundred in order to cross over, if, if you were to consider. And I don't know if that's part of the discussion of why it wanted to be as close as possible. Um, and I, and I, and I know it's sensitive, I know that the property owners that live near here are one, are one hundred percent vested. And potentially, you know, w- would have to work through ugly property processes and potential lawsuits. And, I mean, it, this is, this is not an easy thing to solve, there's no easy answer, there just isn't.
So, would they have to ra- raise, excuse me, raise the road on ninety-one if you kept it there? They would have to raise the grade to get the clearance, right?
Yeah.
Well, and the other problem is, in order to meet the specs, it's gotta be a, a longer bridge.
Yep.
And so, you're, you're clearing to three hundred south and clear back towards the Heritage Park. And, and the access, you have to have it, it has to be gentle enough for big trucks. 'Cause that's what the purpose is, is to bring the trucks off of the freeway and give them a chance to get on. And so, it comes clear.
The straight bridge comes across like this and turns.
But, it turns way more gentle than that, it's not a T.
No, it's, it is a nine, well, there's, there was two versions of it.
Yeah.
And I, I have it on paper, I don't have it digitally, I wish I did, I would show it. But it, it comes in and it's a sweep ninety, it's not a hard ninety, it's a sweep ninety. But it does come down in ninety over, which, you know, it's gonna, th- that would affect, you can, you can see who all it would affect. First of all, it would affect these property owners, because now you're gonna increase the elevation, right? You'd probably have to completely dead-end three hundred south on either side.
Other thing, by putting the bridge there, you, you end up with two cul-de-sacs.
Yes.
And they're not wide enough for emergency vehicles to make a turn.
And, and, and to that point, we are gonna be on the hook for building whatever needs to be built.
Exactly, so that was, that was one of the, the big things, was by moving it down to three, or to one hundred west, that meant three hundred south was a straight shot, you didn't end up with two cul-de-sacs on Main Street.
Well, you'd end up with two cul-de-sacs down here, um, but it wouldn't be on Main Street. You'd turn Main Street into a, into a T, but this, the, you know, three hundred south would still have cul-de-sacs on either side of one hundred west, right?
Would you have it on six hundred?
I don't think so.
No.
'Cause it's, because the flood channel has moved away from the other connecting roads.
Okay, so, what would, if we, if we move it to six hundred west, then do we dead-end at the bridge, both on Main Street and on Old Highway ninety-one, 'cause that bridge has to come out.
Yeah.
So, it'd be a cul-de-sac on ninety-one and it'd be a cul-de-sac at the end of Main Street.
Um, no, it would be a cul-de-sac at the end of ninety-one, well, what it would do is it would, it would, there would be a turnaround area. And then this, this private drive here would circle around and come off, so that private drive would tie into a turnaround.
It'd end up having to buy, buy the property to make that turn to get down to loosely.
And, and this would turn into a T, just like it here is on one hundred east.
So, it'd be a, but it'd, you would extend three hundred south across Main Street.
Right.
Yeah, that would just drive straight through.
Straight through.
And, and, and that would be the plan if it went to one hundred west also, that would be identical. If it went to one hundred, three hundred, six hundred, that would be the same plan for this area. And again, I have a drawing that shows that, I just don't have it digitally. So, just so everybody's familiar, three hundred west is where the, is where the county road shed is. Oh, it is still in this picture on Google from May of twenty fourteen.
It is washed out, no, it's washed.
It's not there now.
Yeah, no, it's gone.
But in this imagery, it's still there. It's blocked off now.
Yeah, there's not.
What, ha- we just went down his, i- memory lane. We're gonna go, we're gonna go visit Rochelle.
Go visit me.
We'll, we'll turn around and look at it. So, y- I mean, so three hundred west is, and, and, and I would have to look at, um, I mean, you're getting farther away from three hundred south and, and a utility conflict, but, but who, but who knows how far back, you know, depending on the type of road, I mean, bridge. Oh, so you're saying that people who live here wouldn't have to drive all the way down to six hundred? If you put this, wha- does anybody know what that's called? Where, where the road just goes down through the river and you have a, you have a concrete, um, saddle? There is a name for it, and I think cross gutter is what's often used, and I've been trying to think of it all week, so I apologize.
A dip.
That ditch is so deep right there. Like it's.
Is that why it was taken out?
Oh, it got washed out from the floods and it never got fixed.
A concern that I have, and I think that the council ought to consider is that if we're limiting it to one access on Old ninety-one to get into Parowan, with the increased growth that's being developed out on Old ninety-one. We have an emergency, how do you get in on the south side of Parowan?
It's not great, but you do have access, clear down on twenty-two hundred west, there is, there is, there's culverts that the county put in.
I understand that.
But that's a long way out there.
A long ways, and emergency vehicles have to get to any kind of a fire or other emergency type, uh, events that may take place in those subdivisions, um, I become concerned about that. And I think, you know, those emergency officials would be concerned too, okay? And so, it's, we need to kinda look at that and see what, I, I don't like one.
Well, I don't think there would ever be one, there would be two, because there'd be six hundred and then wherever they put the new bridge.
If.
Unless you put the bridge at six hundred at this point.
Oh, unless we put the, I get, I get your point, okay, there's suggestions, solve that. Yeah, so like if we put the bridge at six hundred, then open up maybe.
Three hundred.
The other.
And there's a lot of traffic.
The pavement ends, well, it does in a few places there, but it, it looks like there's an easement.
Oh.
Yep, Parowan City owns, it's not wide enough for a road, but Parowan City does own at least a good, a good half of a road easement right there. So, yeah, it's a, it's a difficult one, I just don't wanna pull the trigger and start spending money until we've called it a gut check, till we, till we're comfortable. And, um, the, the funding i- is, it's not gonna, it's not gonna go away tomorrow. Um, if we need to slow the process down and look at it a little bit, we can do that. But, um, there will come a point where, where we'll be in danger of losing the funding. And I don't know exactly that date, but it's not this year, but we do, but costs are just going up. So, I mean, we, we probably need to fish or cut bait, but I don't know that, that decision has been made tonight. It's just that we are now being asked to write a check, um, we have a project manager on board, we've signed a federal aid agreement. And we need to, we need to move on, on something, um, relatively quickly, so.
Okay, there's no more discussion, we can move forward. And, um, you know, that was one of my first questions, is it threaten our funding if we, if we take a minute? And it was no, you just need to really be sure, and then when you're really sure, we can, we can start designing and all those things. So, and I, I also, I think we both were surprised, and Kobe was surprised in that initial meeting where we learned all the other additional costs that we will be incurring, that we will be one hundred percent responsible for. Um, and if that bridge, you know, we don't know, but it could be engineered maybe not as high, down farther, you know, whatever those, however the math works with that engineering, I mean, these are all things we could obviously explore as we discuss options.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
If we moved it to six hundred, are we still liable for the approach up to that bridge? I, I mean, we would have to be making less cost to, 'cause it's already wide enough.
Well, I'll tell you what we would, what the city would be on the hook for. Um, potentially, all of that work on Main Street to redo that, which we've just talked about back and forth with Jim. Um, six hundred is already a major corridor, but I don't know if it was built. I mean, on the map, it is a major corridor. But I don't know if the actual road was built to that standard or not.
Saying is, do we need?
I don't know.
Neither is the other one.
I don't.
Wide enough that we don't have to, my personal, I don't, I'll go on the record and say, I don't care for the one hundred north, or one hundred south. Or whatever, one hundred east, west, yeah.
I think it is a wider road, I, I need to do some, and this is something Kelly would probably know off the top of his head. Um, but we would probably have to do some intersection work, right, some signage and intersection work. Um, we do have a wider two hundred south because of that turn lane up there. And so, that right there is, is huge, because if that becomes your new, um, a new detour, you know, you could have signs that, that everybody detouring can come into the turning lane and then can make that left-hand turn. You may have to make some improvements for a right-hand turn, I don't know.
The only thing, I'd say you're.
But it is a longer distance that we have to widen if we have to improve this road. Like back here on one hundred, you only have to do it for a block, down here on six hundred, you have to do it for two blocks. So, that's, but, but you may already have a, a better road to start with, and so it's probably, you know, so that's an unknown. But I, I don't believe the work would be as expensive there for the city stuff, but, but I don't know, sorry Dave.
There was a, a, gosh, what was there, on that six hundred west, there was some lot line adjustments.
That's right.
Where the property was given back to the property owners.
You would have to.
And it tapered from two hundred south to ninety-one as you, as you progressed, it got wider. And so.
Have they already been done, we're, I'm looking at a parcel viewer right now.
Well, it should've been.
Last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that's right, we did that, we gave it back to the property owners.
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a live measurement, nobody judge me if I do it badly. Oh, I don't want that in miles, I want it in feet. At the narrowest part, you're seventy-six feet. Um, and, oh, don't look at that one, that's a five-year flood picture. Which we're gonna talk about, but I don't, still don't wanna look at that map, sorry, I gotta zoom out. Um, so it shows that it should be a ninety-seven foot for a minor arterial. But it doesn't have to be a minor arterial, according to UDOT, it has to be, was it a major collector? I think it has to be a major collector or either a collector. So, it's either sixty-five foot right-of-way or a seventy-eight foot right-of-way, um, per, um, the rules of UDOT.
Well, I'm sure that's done, 'cause that was, that was supposed to have been recorded and done.
It looks to me like, oh, man.
City Council live and uncut.
Looks like it's still around seventy-nine, eighty feet, um, at the, at the minimum, assuming that the county's parcel, um, map is up to date. That's an assumption. So, thoughts? You wanna- you wanna mull it over?
I think we ought to look at six hundred for- or other options.
I mean, we could have Jones and DeMille, and it would cost money, but we could have Jones and DeMille do what they did at these two and do that analysis down there. I'm not a fan of spending money, but this is- we're about to spend a lot of money, so I'd rather build the right bridge.
Better make sure it's right.
At the right location, yeah.
Yeah. I would say go for it, but that's just me. I mean, let's make sure it's right and.
I would have them look at it, too.
But they absolutely say they will not pay for the removal of that old bridge.
He said, "Well, maybe if there's extra funds and we can prove th-" but he didn't wanna commit to anything.
I mean, it needs to be done upfront, not in the event that there may be extra money and.
Right.
Maybe able to, you know, implement it into the tail end. It- no, it needs to be upfront.
And- and I don't know if removing it would be terribly expensive. It's going to be the.
Everything else.
Everything else.
Right.
Um, yeah, it's everything else involved. Um, just because the- 'cause it's heavy in here, um, he- he did say that they- a bridge that they just did, the pioneers, man, and- and later than the pioneers, you gotta love them. They had- they took an old rail car. They took the wheels off of it, and they built two cement structures and plunked that thing down, and that's been serving as a bridge for one of the communities in Utah for like a hundred years.
Whoa, why can't we do that?
That's what I'm saying. Let's get a couple rail cars and slap 'em down.
Let's use Conex boxes.
There you go.
That's Beaver, by the way.
Is that Beaver?
Oh, that was Beaver. Yeah, that, but the Grove, that's what they have. When they take an ambulance across it, the duly tires, one hangs off the side, each side as they drive the ambulance.
Wow.
Over that road.
I've seen it. I just can't remember where it was.
But you know what? It works great. It's actually quite effective. It's just an upside-down rail roller car.
All right, so a lot to think about.
Yep.
Um, moving along now.
Hey, should I ask Jones and DeMille what they would charge us to h- to look at six hundred?
Well, I think.
Can't hurt to ask.
It's not gonna hurt to ask.
I think we need to look at every option.
So, three hundred and six hundred, or just six hundred?
Well, I thought we had- well, three hundred hasn't been looked at, and there was just one hundred.
Just one hundred west was.
That's all that's been looked at, other than Main Street.
Well, that and- remember, they did look at straightening out the bridge.
Two options at Main Street.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And that- that turned into an access road clear up there above Heaps's Spring and back down to. Anyway, so it was that and one hundred west is what they looked at.
Okay. Well, I think six hundred and then, like Sam said, maybe three hundred could be looked at as a alternative route like six hundred is right now. You know, when it is passable. But they bet put it down on six hundred as far as the bridge. Think there's less impact down there.
All right, moving to item number- did- did you get the answer that you were asking for? You got clarity? Okay. Um, moving to item fourteen, discussion about flood preparation. Um, we've had quite a bit of community engagement, people offering to help, um, any way they can with the incoming, you know, concern with the flood, water coming down, and so I think, Dan, you were gonna address that out. We don't have your name next to it, but.
Yeah. So, um, we are very aware of the snowpack. Um, I- I was at a presentation the other day that Paul Monroe from the Iron County Central Water Conservancy put on, where he actually showed all of the recent years and the historical years of flood of, um, not flood. He never mentioned the word flood, but snowpack on the mountain specifically up at Blowhard. And we're at two hundred percent. We're at twenty-five, um, inches of water right now. That is not the record. Um, but it is a lot. It is- he said it is more than double than the last two years combined.
Wow.
Um, and- and then it- the cool thing is, I wish I had the- his graph, 'cause it showed the relative speed that the- that the water has melted off in the- in the different years, and you can- you can see some years where they got like really hot winds that blew, melt was fast, and then other times it was slower. Sometimes it'll- it'll- it'll rain up there, and that can cause it. We're very aware of that being a- a distinct possibility. And so, um, we've been- we've been talking about it in city council for a while, and this is what the city has been doing, and- and we also want to have some discussion about, um, the public has been offering and talking about things that can be done as well. Um, uh, we have- if you may have noticed, the- there's a county track hole. They, um, Curtis, this is a kind of a c- a combined county-city problem. Um, the county deals with flood mitigation as things are really within city boundaries. The city has, um, some responsibility for that as well. There is not a distinct, um, flood channel that's on anybody's deeds or is recorded. But, and I wish- and I- and I'd show you, but there's- if you look, you can look back a hundred years ago, um, they had different ways that- this is a- this is an allubial fan, right? The water comes out historically and has just fanned out. Um, there's times when, you know, way back, when- when it- this was basically like five fingers of flood channel that kinda came out across there. This map that I'm showing right now is on the county's website, which shows, um, this is an early, um, um, FEMA map for flood stuff. A lot of our FEMA flood plane maps for insurance and things are based on this old map. They're in the middle of doing a new one, which probably won't be done until, I think it was twenty twenty-six. Um, the reality of it is, right now, we have- we have- basically, we have the structure, which is the breakwater, and then we have Perron Creek. And even not too long ago, recently, there was some canals, and there wasn't a real defined channel. Um, but it- it kind of flowed in some canals, and of course, you had the- the irrigation canals. But a lot of this just sheet flowed out across the- this farmland, which is out here. Um, now, of course, there is building going on. There is, um, there's- there's still farmland out there, but we have subdivisions being built. Um, not too long ago, um, basically, a flood channel was established. This is a topographical map right now that we're looking at. And so this is not drawn on a map with a piece of paper. This is literally the- the flood channel topographically that you can see as it cuts out through the valley out there. And in some places, you have city on one side, county on the other, um, city on both sides, county on both sides, and it's like a patchwork as it moves out. So, we're working with the county. The county track hole, in fact, I just was- that's why I got mud on my boot- on my dress shoes right now. The county track hole is out there right now by this subdivision out near I fifteen, um, cleaning out these two culverts and- and working on the ditch. In a perfect world, the county would be here the entire time and get this entire flood channel cleaned, um, but they have multiple responsibilities of flood channels throughout the county. So, they've- they've done us a solid. They will be here back and forth. The city's gonna do some work, but we're working on this flood channel. We brought, um, for about four days, the city public works guys, we had two trucks running. The county had five trucks hauling what's called riprap from the- from the iron mines over by Iron Springs, west of Cedar City. We hauled a lot of riprap over. Riprap is jagged stone, um, and it's used to armor the sides of flood channels because it locks together. Smooth, round rocks do not lock together. They just roll on down, but- but riprap will actually lock in, so the term is used to- to armor the side of a flood channel. Um, if anybody looks, in fact, we can see it probably on the map. Um, a recent project that the county did with an NRCS grant, they armored, just where we're talking, three hundred west and two hundred west, one hundred west. These were kinda some problem areas, and so with the grant, the county actually came in and made improvements and armored these areas. And so, um, down to six hundred west, and then there was a lot of work that was done, city and county. Um, they armored this right where it drops off from six hundred west, just to try to control erosion. And- and- and you can see what happens from there on. It looks like it kind of turns a little bit unruly. Um, of course, um, after the- the burn scar, we had flooding. Um, the- the- the, um, channel left its banks right here and deviated down through this subdivision, flooded this house, filled the basement. Um, and so, um, this was- this- this improvement was put in to redirect this channel nice and straight. However, there are some- some improvements, frankly, that need to be done, um, along the entire flood channel, but specifically what's keeping me up at night is- is really the- some of the sediment that's in the channel. Um, the fact that this channel right here is not, um, does not have a good slope on it, doesn't have any armoring. Um, and if you have a long sustained flow at the top of the ditch, it will- it will chew back that bank. So, we have- we've staged a bunch of riprap at the end of one thousand, and if we can get the stinking weather to cooperate, it's just- there's so much moisture in the soil. It's just mud. Um, w- we are going to do a project to improve this flood channel. Um, it won't be up to the standard that the NRCS says in order to pass the cubic feet per second that I said. Um, but it will be much improved from what it's- from where it's at today. That's- that's one of my goals, is to get the entire flood channel sediment removed, get that piece fixed if we can. I wanna get this kind of, um, redirected here so it's not so windy, 'cause once water really starts going left and right, it can really undercut and- and take a lot of, um, dirt. Doesn't take your land. Your land still exists. It's just down twenty feet. And, huh, if there happened to be a structure there, you got a problem, right? So, um, this actually isn't as big of a concern, but I'd like to get in and re- recut this straight and- and put dirt on either side of it, right? Um, and- and then, really, we have a lot of overgrowth from Main Street up. This is really overgrown. We have trees. We have- it hasn't been cleaned, um, or reshaped for a long time. There's some fairly large trees in there. Problem with that is you get a- you get a tree coming down with high water, that tree lodges sideways on trees that are grown in your flood channel, you've just created a dam. And then that can divert water. So, as much as we love trees and, um, and everything, we do have to remove them out of the flood channel so that we can, um, safely pass that water. So, um, w- we- we delivered letters to all of the property owners- no, excuse me, all of those with houses where the- the flood channel goes through their backyard that says that the city and county are gonna be going in and doing maintenance. We will have to remove some trees. We will have equipment in your backyard. Um, we'll try to do the best we can, but it- but it's, you know, it's- it is what it is. It's messy. We- we wish it was a nice, slow-running creek, and it never had its banks flow, and, um... Wow, almost got emotional for a second. If you lived- what I- what I lived through in twenty-one, my neighborhood was flooded in Cedar, out in the valley. Flying L was- was the epicenter of the flood channel leaving its banks. And, um, the county had done maintenance on it, but they had left a lot of trees, and they- when the subdivisions were built, they encroached right on the flood channel, and a lot of property owners said, "Don't get in there. I don't want my trees removed, and if you can't get in with heavy equipment to- to get that sediment out and put it back on the banks, then when you have high water flow," um, basically, they had a bridge back up, and once it left its banks, it cut a new channel, and it ran for about a day. And, um, I think they removed about two thousand- this is Coal Creek. It's a different creek, but they removed two thousand dump trucks from silt from one subdivision. Um, and it was- it was awesome in its- in its destructiveness. It was- it was amazing, so, um, I'm a little scarred. I- I don't want anything like that to happen here. Um, I- I really would like to get in and clean this. Eventually, if we can get grant money, we're gonna want to- to widen this and really improve it to the point where, um, a large event wouldn't hurt. Now, the real challenge for us is not gonna be- snow melt is not gonna give you a hundred-year flood. It's possible if the conditions were absolutely perfect. Usually, what we get is the goalie washers that come down from a cloud burst. Um, that's what could cause a one hundred-year flood, and I really didn't mean for this to be up here, but I've- I just had it. That's a five hundred-year flood. You really don't wanna see that. This is what a one hundred year flood looks like per their model, based on our LiDAR. Um, the dark blue is zero to half of a foot. Now, if you had six inches of water that ran through town, the majority of that would run through- through the- the cross gutters. They would run through your burrow ditches, um, houses that are built up a couple inches. You know, some would have problems, others wouldn't. Um, the- the- the light blue, you're getting up to a foot to two feet. And then, of course, you get into your yellows and reds, and you're talking four, five, six feet. Um, I'm gonna zoom in on this. Um, so you can see where- where- and this is based on- this is not- this is not like somebody got a crayon and- and drew this to- to make it look bad. It's based on our actual elevations. Sorry, I zoomed, and I shouldn't have moved my... It's based on our actual elevations and putting forty-eight hundred cubic feet per second of water to come out. Um, you can see the- the breakwater catches the majority of this and- and conveys it through, but you can see right here what happens. I'm gonna zoom in on this. Here's our Main Street bridge. And that other bridge. That's going to act as a dam, and it's gonna divert water out. That's why we're talking about a bridge reconstruction with a larger bridge. Um, another major issue that I wanna point out, and we have been harping on UDOT. You see that right there?
Oh, yeah.
UDOT's culvert that goes under the freeway will pass three hundred feet per second, cubic feet per second. It is.
It's inches, isn't it?
It is one tenth the size- no, it's- it's pretty big. I think it's- I don't know how big it is, but it wa- it's one tenth the size that it needs to be, assuming we make all of the improvements to the ditch all the way down. Um, the other issue is- is, um, we're talking about right now the ACE hardware. Everybody wants that to go in. We want it to go in quickly. There's a commercial subdivision. Um, you- you'll see what I fifteen does. It creates this natural dam, um, where all of this flood water that sheet flows out across there, well, it all hits I fifteen, and it turns it into this like little river, which then pools right here, right? And so, the city, that's why we've done- these are all the things that have been on the agenda recently. That's why we're doing a drainage study on two hundred south. We're designing what the storm drain looks like for the city on this end of town. Um, and by the way, w- as long as I'm here, I'm gonna keep railing on UDOT until they can prioritize this. They had to shut the freeway down only a couple of years ago because of water running over. So, they need to do this. There's that subdivision that sits right here, right? Um, we need to get that, um, that done, and they know it, and- and we're talking to them, and- and so. Anyways, I- I really did not wanna- to scare anybody, but, um, the city is aware of- of, um, I mean, we're talking about with- with rainwater. I wanna show you, this was their recommendations of improving the breakwater, um, putting in a- a diversion so that we can divert some of the rainwater off, or the- or the storm water off, and put it in the county's pit down on three hundred east. Um, that's gonna be probably phase two. After we wanna improve the breakwater, we'll- we'll look at- at building a- a pipe system that takes it down behind the fairgrounds and takes it into that pit so that we can divert a lot of that water. Also, that helps for recharge. We wanna be able to recharge as much of this water as we can. Um, they conceptually, so don't panic if you own property out here, they conceptualized another retention basin, or two, to be able to put water into. Um, but even with all of those improvements, you're still at three thousand, um, cubic thirty-one, twelve cubic feet per second at the freeway, even with all of those improvements in. So, um, that's a one hundred year event. Statistically, it doesn't mean it happens every one hundred years. It means that it has a one percent chance of happening in any year. So, that's what that means. So, anyways, back to what the- what the city is doing. We've done work on the breakwater to try to, um, to work on that a little bit, and that's really not gonna do too much, because we're just gonna have a long, steady flow. Hopefully, it's long and steady and not quick because of rain off, um, uh, melt off. But we are gonna get in and improve this channel. We're going to get in and armor the side- the sides of this, um, channel in this area, try to put more slope on it. And, um, and hopefully, the weather will cooperate and allow us to do this, get in with our heavy machinery, 'cause you just can't work when it's- when it's too muddy. But we're gonna clean out the sediment throughout the whole channel, so. Um, however, people have asked, what can the- what can citizens do? What can- what- what can be done? Um, however, people have asked what can the, what can citizens do, what can, what, what can be done? Um, the county has offered up, uh, the emergency manager has, he just bought, just told me today, bought fifty thousand sandbags. Um, they do not come filled with sand, they come completely empty with little ties in little bags. And, um, but they have offered up sand, UDOT has offered up sand, we do have a sandbag filling, um, um, machine the city does. So, I'm gonna work with, um, Kelly and, and find a place that we can stage sand and the filling machine and sandbags. And we'll, would like to, um, look to work with, um, community groups, wards, stakes, other community groups. Um, if they want to have a, what they've done over in Cedar with all the flooding is they'll organize a, a group, they'll be there, we'll, we'll make sure that we're there to support them. And, um, a l- many hands can make a ton of sandbags. Um, I was, I, I volunteered a lot of time and I was running the, the county's big loader. And about every twenty minutes, I was putting another dump of sand in the large loader. And they were going through that much sand in about every twenty minutes and they had pallets, they were just filling those pallets. And then people were taking them, um, if they knew they had an issue at their house. Some people that really probably had nothing to worry about were building a wall around their house. And then other people who probably should care, um, just didn't and weren't worried about it at all. The hard thing of it is, is you usually react to the last flood that happens and, and no flood is usually ever the same thing. But what we'd like to do is encourage citizens to look at their own yards, look at your neighbors' yards. When's the last time that you cleaned out your, your burrow ditch? When's the last time that you cleaned out that, that old sto- that old canal, irrigation canal in your backyard? It's there for a reason. We, we tend to want to fill them up with sand, I mean, with, uh, grass clippings and, and, and dirt, cause they don't work good for our, our landscaping. Those are there for a reason and, and if you do have, in the event you do have a, something break its channel, those vents will take a lot of water. So, what we're really talking about right now is the melt, which is gonna come down the canyon. But even in the fall, when the monsoon seasons come, you can get a cloud burst, so it's a good thing, clean out your burrow ditches. Um, look around at your, your driveway culverts, you can have a pipe and you've driven on the side and pinched it down, it's now not gonna pass water. Get that thing opened up, make sure you can see daylight all the way through it, um, mow the weeds down and so it can go. And in case anybody is wondering, I, I'm not trying to, you know, be preachy or anything. It is legally the citizen's responsibility, the property owner's responsibility to maintain your, your ditch in front of your house, your burrow ditch. Just like it is to, um, shovel the snow if you have a sidewalk. It's the same thing, it's intercode. The city cannot go through the entire city and, and clean all of these things. So, we, we encourage people to look at their own property, just take a step back and say, "What would I do? Where would the water go if it were to come down the street here?" And say, "Well, that definitely would be a problem" and then, and then do it, help your neighbors, stuff like that. And we'll just invite, you know, the, the wards and community groups and stakes, um, to do some sandbag projects. Um, we hope to have a load of sand delivered today and they, they called it off, but, um, UDOT said that they'd get a sand. We just need to figure out where we're gonna do it and we'll announce it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So, last item on the agenda other than reports and updates, we didn't make the six thirty cutoff, sorry about that.
What about fifteen?
Fifteen is potential property disposal, South Central Head End.
Okay, one more for me and I will stop talking after this. Um, in our recent audit, um, long story short, we have to show all cap, all leases, either the property that we lease or property that we receive rent on or lease money on, we have to show it on our books as a capital asset or a liability. And, um, as we got looking at that, there is on three hundred east in the city yard, um, you basically, you have the, um, I'm gonna get a better picture. You have the Quest Star lot where Quest Star's, um, gas, the gas company has their facilities soon as the internet wants to update that picture. Um, here we go. And, and that lot is owned by Quest Star, now Dominion. And right next to it, you have South Central's, what they call their head end unit. Um, where they have equipment stored, um, essentially the brain of a cable company, right? That is actually on city-owned property. I'm gonna go back to a, to a parcel view up over the top. I had the county recorder fix this today because this used to have this drawn, Quest Star's, um, parcel was actually drawn incorrectly and it showed it around South Central's building. So, I looked into it, the deed was dat- back in the seventies and it just had been misdrawn. So, Adele Lloyd, if you know her, she hurried and redrew it for us so that we could see it correctly on our map. So, this is a city property. Um, we have the three hundred east well, no, 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 this is what we call the racetrack well. Um, South Central has equipment in here. Um, we, they have a lease and they pay us like seven hundred dollars a year. Um, as we looked at this, um, we, we th- we talked about renewing this lease, possibly, um, adjusting the lease. We need to have, we don't even actually have the paperwork, it was probably signed three or four cable companies ago and we, we've yet to locate it. But, um, they threw out the idea, "Why don't we just buy that land from you? Um, it's not something that the city is ever going to use, it will always be a key part of their infrastructure." Um, just like we sold this land to Quest Star, the question is, is do we sell a piece of ground to South Central? Let them fence it off so that, they would rather it be fenced separately so they have better security. We'd probably have, like to have our own yard with that gate shut all the time. As it is, since it's kind of co-used, a lot of times that gate stays open. Um, we allow Brianhead to park a, a couple of trucks there as well. But for security reasons, they would like to put a fence around their yard, change the access point. Even if it means that they have to fix our, change our gates and they'd pay for the whole thing if they, if they did, depending on what we wanted to do. I just wanted to bring it to the council and see whether you wanted to consider the idea of, of disposing it. We would have to go through our disposal process of real property. Probably, um, we would have them survey it and we would have a, um, an appraisal done to see what the land is worth and sell it at that point. We can choose to sell it to a specific person without putting it out to bid or entity. Um, per our code, if there's a good reason to do so, and I would think selling it to a utility that is there would be fine not to go through that process. Um, we can, we can, anyways, so that's doable if you want to.
How big of a piece do they need?
So, eventuali- uh, first we were talking like fifty by fifty, sixty by sixty, something like that. And he said, "Is there any way you'd do a hundred by sixty, which would give them a little bit of space for them to get in, turn a truck around, stage of fiber roll or whatever?" Right now, if you go, they have fiber rolls scattered throughout the property and (laugh) w- I'm good friends with their, I used to work at South Central. Oh, um, back before I got into government, back before I sold my soul and got into government. And I know, I know their, their guys and their, their, uh, director, their, no, I guess he's their COO. He was, he was really upset when he found out that there was stuff just scattered all over. In their defense, and, and the South Central guys are great, they had staged stuff for a big project that they were doing in Brianhead. And this is what they used to stage it, I believe they, they talked with us and they're planning on getting that cleaned up as soon as they get that project done. But they do, they would like, maybe like a hundred by sixty, we could tell them, we'd tell them, "No, redo the lease." We could tell them sixty by sixty and see if they went for it, or we could give them a hundred by sixty.
Does the lease specify a specific area?
Haven't read it, I can't find it.
He's trying to locate it and he can't.
Jeremy, I'm wondering if you got any id- any input on this? There's a couple of power poles there, but they're not ours, I think that they're old, um, they're not tied to anything. And like, so back in the day when cable was done the old school way, remember these were always surrounded by big C-band satellite dishes? Um, there's, you can see the, the old mounts in the ground where they had these satellite dishes in the past. There's only one that's now still remaining, they now do it all with, with microwave back halls and with fiber circuits. That's how they get everything to this head end, which then it goes out so they can provide TV service. They have one antenna on this thing, they, they're talking they would take that down, probably build an antenna on top of their facility to get rid of this, so... So, I, I really don't care, I, I am, I'm, I'm still friends with people on there, but it doesn't, doesn't matter to me. I'm not, um, trying to push it, if you will, so... Any thoughts on that? They just didn't want to...
Well, if the gas companies got there, I don't see any, you can make that whole corner utilities. You know, I, as long as it doesn't affect our guys.
They just didn't want to pay for a survey and go down that road and spend money unless we were open to the idea. I haven't had a chance to talk to Kelly about it, this literally has just come up in the last week and a half. So, I'll ask Kelly's opinion, but, um, we're not using it now, I mean, it's...
I'd say go for it, yeah.
Well, there's a question, we have that well about the, that area that's close to the well, uh, what do they call that?
The wellhead protection zone?
Yeah, that wells...
This, this wouldn't change that at all, in fact, that's, that's right in state law. So, our well is right here, th- wh- wh- who, no matter who owns it, we have that wellhead protection and they can't affect it. So, they couldn't drop chemicals or on the ground or, you know, whatever. Now, Jeremy's been thinking...
Yeah, they'd be restricted as to some use.
It would, but it does now.
Yeah.
I think behind the gas, uh, there's current gas and there's a, a pipe that comes out of that well, it overflow. Somewhere in the trees, there's like a little pond right there, so, uh, I think there's a pipe that comes from that well somewhere, I'm not the one to get on this.
From our well?
Yeah, there's like an overflow right there, that's why it's all green, so long as it...
Would want to protect that interest.
Yeah, so I don't know where the fence would have to be with, be out of that, but I'm sure Kelly has more info on that.
And for the record, I really want to clean that lot up.[1302.11][1302.15](laugh)
But I think you just need to make sure it doesn't interfere with any future use or any existing use.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'll see what Kelly thinks about it as well and if you guys are open to it, then...
I'd say yes.
They can get an estim- I mean, they can get a...
Survey?
An appraisal and do the surveying and come up with a plan for the fencing. Like, we wouldn't want it to impede our access without them, I mean, let's say they brought a fence right down to the corner of our fence. That may be a problem for that gate, we may have to shift the gate down ten feet or something like that, so... But they'd be open to it, they, they would rather own the, own the property that, that is very central to their operation here. Um, South Central's a great partner for us, I love the fact that we don't just have some random cable company. Because they buy and sell those things like stocks, every, the cable company changes in Cedar like once a year. South Central is, they are the local, what they call the ILEC, which is a, um, the incumbent local exchange carrier. Outside of the I fifteen corridor, they're the co-op that's been there when phones were very first strung, when, before they were broke up. So, they are invested in Southern Utah, they're not going anywhere. Now, in Parolin, they are what's called a CELEC, a competitive local exchange carrier where they compete with, um, uh, Century Link. And so, they, they provide services over their cable network, they're not the phone company, they're technically the cable company. And they pay franchise fees and taxes, but they're a good partner.
All right, anything else on that one? Okay.
I'm done talking.
We can move to reports, updates, old business follow-up from elected officials and staff. Um, I think we started on this end last time, so we'll start on this end this time.
Couple of, three meetings this week, uh, we had, uh, airport on Monday. Uh, there was a discussion of, uh, the runway construction project updated by Dan. And then we had the main hangar up, roof update, also by Dan. And then, uh, the new member Dell Tanner Junior was introduced. Uh, and, uh, as far as the runway construction, the bids are going out, uh, here soon. Uh, Dan, correct me if I misdate, uh, I think it was the ninth, nineteenth or...
The fourteenth is the, when they're due for the bids.
I had it written down here, so hold on.
They were originally gonna be on the seventh and they kicked it back a week.
That's, and everything's on, on track there. The hangar, uh, Dan updated, uh, he's come up with a plan to extend the life of the, the airport roof. Uh, and then we had water board last night. Went over a lot of stuff, uh, the Department of Natural Resources has a rebate program that Dan's gonna present out to the, uh, citizens. Where you get a rebate if you take up sod. Uh, also, he gave a presentation to the members of the, uh, uh, water board on our master plan, the same one that we went over. Uh, talked about that. Also, uh, updates on some significant senate and house bills that affect our water. Uh, some good news in it as far as not metering our secondary, so... And then, uh, Dan wrote a letter, uh, you need to send that to the, the rest of the council.
Oh, yeah.
That, uh...
I know one.
It's a comment for the, uh, groundwater management plan with the state, Dan did a excellent job. Used all the big lawyer words. Made it sound real smart, so... Actually, it was a, a well-done letter, we need to have that presented to the rest of the council. Also, we had, uh, (cough) excuse me, uh, introduced two new members to the water board, uh, Carolyn Ray and, and Doug Fox. Uh, good additions to our water board. Uh, and then on our irrigation, uh, we had an update on the, uh, Dry Canyon Pond that we are still in the works. Uh, and other than that, Dan, was there anything I forgot?
Has that application been made, did the BLM on that Dry Canyon Pond?
The applica- that's on my list of updates, yes, the application has been made for easement to, to, for that Dry Canyon Pond project. We'll see if we get it and we hope we don't have to go through NEPA.
Yeah. Uh, one last thing, uh, I don't know if you're aware, uh, Don Horton's help isn't very good and so he had to withdraw from the, the airport board and the water board. He's given many years of service and, uh, I got a couple of cards. Heather is the secretary for both of them and they're on the table. If the council would sign, then we'll get those to Don, I mean, he's been on there for years. And, uh, I think we just need to say thanks, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, we just had one meeting and I wasn't able to make it for economic development, but I understand that there wasn't enough for a form. And we are just, I think, uh, needing a couple of people on the, that board, so I think that's all I've got.
Thank you.
And I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, I didn't have any meetings, but, um, just wanted to remind everybody that the Parolin swap meet is on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of this month. And then also soccer signups are still going until the twenty-fifth of March as well. And I've heard a lot of people in the public say they don't know where to sign up, go sign up at the visitor's center. So, there we go. Your turn.
Okay, um, planning and zoning met and they, uh, recommended the final plat approval or at least the process for the final plat for the Banks Group. That's the group down by the interchange. And, um, the billboard ordinance was sent to legal from the planning and zoning that they've been working on. And the Shade Tree Committee met and, uh, as we discussed, Ryan Johnson gave a presentation on the Lilac Boar. And so, I think we've kinda been, you know, been brought up to date on that. And we are, we are working currently on the Meeks Park water situation so that we can make sure that the... so that we can make sure that the city's water right is taken care of there for, so we can have the fish there. And that group will meet as we discussed. Uh, we're gonna try and get things going as far as some plans and some, you know, different, uh, I guess, have everybody kinda, you know, put together some kind of a projected, uh, vision of that park and what they want to do, and it'll, we'll take into consideration this suggestion with this pump park and, and, you know, we'll present that and see what they want to do. And, uh, I was just trying to think. Oh, I did see, talk about water flooding down on Two Hundred South, Holly Oak Lane. That, they've turned that water down, that lane ditch, that lane stream they call it. And it was, there was a lot of plugged up culverts and, and things where that water was spreading out and onto the adjoining properties and things. So I know it's not the city, but somehow we gotta get the, that lane stream to clean that. And that's, of course, along with everything else, it'll have to be cleaned to take some of the water, but that was pretty obvious. So that's, you know, that's an early sign because, you know, we haven't had anything really come as far as heavy water yet. But anyway, I did see that. So that's a sign of a lot of preventive work that's gotta be done in these, these channels. It'll be cleaned and in preparation for this water that's gonna come. And like Dan described, it isn't just the main channels. It's all these other tributaries and the ditches and their culverts and anything to take that, you know, that water. And I'm, I appreciate the work that is being done, Dan, on that. Cause I, I sometimes lie awake at night just thinking about what is going, could happen. And so I'm glad that there is some proactive and, and hopefully it can be successful in what's gonna come. And we're, cause we're grateful for this water, but I think we're all to a point that we'd like to kinda not be so selfish and share the blessing now. But, uh, I noticed around town, I think everybody's, this town is, uh, this city is, is, uh, suffering from a little bit of a cabin fever epidemic because I saw more people out today walking and active and out working on some of these fields and on these baseball or the ball fields. I don't know if they were just what they were doing, but anyway, it was good. I think the snow's leaving and people are coming alive and it's good to see it. It's good to see it.
I've talked a lot, but, um, I wanted to give everybody a teaser. Come to City Council next time. We will have a presentation of the feasibility study on the pool. Just been working with that, with the company that we hired to kind of finalize that. Um, and so we'll have a presentation next time and, and, and have a little bit more information so that we can figure out where we're going. Um, if you have, if you have ideas, Council, on how you'd like to see that go. Do we want to just have that presentation and then, um, and then consider it? And then have something on a future agenda? Do you want to do a public hearing? Do you want to do whatever? All I'm saying is, is we will have the feasibility study presented next time, and so wherever we want to go from there, just be thinking about it. Um, pickleball grant, um, we do have that grant. Um, we, we wanted to have a good, um, design. We had the original design that was done by Sunrise Engineering for the Lions Park, which had, it was basketball courts slash two pickleball courts on the same surface. So it was, it was like two pickleball courts kinda spread out on a basketball court and then a sand volleyball pit. And that, that, we had plans for that and we spent the money. Um, I reached out to Sunrise to say, how much would you charge us to just basically reconfigure that to just, and I, and I drew it out, what we'd want it to look like, um, so that we could actually take that to bid. So that contractors could look at it, know exactly what they're bidding. Um, and so, um, I haven't heard back, but hopefully this, tomorrow or next week, they will give me a price. And if it's, if it's a ridiculous price, then, um, I do have the full specs for the pickleball courts that they, are in the middle of building. They're just turning dirt right now in Cedar. It's a different grade, different, different kind of slightly designed, but, you know, we could probably take those to a contractor and say, could you modify these? I'm hoping that Sunrise can come back for very low cost and just, cause they've already looked at them on that site and could just update them. But we had a committee that met and, and made some recommendations. So hopefully we can get some bids and, and return that and know what we're looking at. Um, so one thing to consider, um, as we've been in, like, neck deep in, in pickleball when we get a minute here and there, um, we keep hearing a repetitive concern, and that is of noise. So, um, I think we would want to consider Lions Park. Um, certainly before we went to a point where we built the courts, that we would want to talk to the residents around there. Specifically that live around the park and make sure that they're on board. It would really be bad if we built these courts and then people said, we wish you hadn't have done that. It's too loud. Apparently, noise is a real factor when people are playing competitive pickleball. It's the sound of the ball and the racket. So, and we don't really know what that would do. I mean, obviously acoustics are different, different areas. But, um, I've heard now from several people that cities have said, don't put it too close to residential areas. So this is not something that we even talked about much earlier. So, um, it's possible that we may want to move forward and pick a different spot. Um, and we may want to still do them there, and we may not get enough money. And of course, we haven't made that final decision until we have bids. We're not going to. But just something I want the council to think about, maybe we go do a door knocking campaign and talk to the residents there and see, make sure that they're in full support of it or look at some other locations, so. Anyways, that's all I had. I was gonna talk about Dry Ro- Dry Canyon project, but, but Dave brought that up, so that's all I have, Mayor. No, it was good.
Does it seem like we have an easy job? Um, I, I don't have a whole lot to add, and, uh, I did commit to trying to keep it short, a little shorter, shorter than usual tonight, which I feel like we've done a decent job with everything we had to cover. Um, I did attend several meetings over the past two weeks. I need to start putting together like a photo documentary, so it's more interesting to the community. But one of the more recent ones was a mayor's roundtable, and every now and then we'll get the governor. But, um, we do get the governor's director of rural, um, communities, and that's Stephen Lizinby. And anyway, there was a, a great conversation. All the rural mayors were having the same complaint, which is how are we supposed to conserve water when legislation is pushing development? Um, it was really interesting. It was a really good conversation. So I just want to shout out again to our representative Vickers and Albright. I mean, we came out of legislative session. There are a few things here that Dan updated, um, we won't go deep into the weeds on, on that. But everything turned out really pretty well for us on the ones that we went, went up to bat for. And, um, they just are, we need to talk to them. They'll, they'll help us. They'll get our messages shared and they'll bring our voices to these conversations if we have ideas or ways things could be changed or adjusted that make these, um, these new laws work better for our communities. Um, it's not like they don't want to hear from us. They do. It's really hard when it's in legislative session, though. So it's better to communicate on a regular basis during the year, um, and have those good relationships. So if you do need to send an email or a quick text or something, they know who you are. But, um, it was great to hear from, you know, the mayors around us in these other communities, some of them smaller than us, that are having similar problems. They're all really hard. We're all working really hard and trying to figure it out. But it's not easy problems on, on any level. But I do want you to know that the, the, um, system works a lot of the time, better than we think it does, at least with our local people. Um, I just have had another great year of experience with them, and, and I know that they do want to, most of all, they want to hear from us. So don't ever feel like your voice doesn't matter. Um, I was in a meeting this afternoon with, um, the Trails Group that it looks like, uh, Mike Worthen had a lot of really good positive inputs. So did Dave Jacobsen. It looks like we're gonna get some county projects done. The Five Mile, I'm sure everyone's heard, is moving along. They're actually hiring right now for that position, so it's gonna be kind of the caretaker of that property. Um, I don't know if anyone else saw the posting, but I was like, I hope it's someone local. It'd be nice to have someone that's just here close by and, and really cares about that area. But, um, there are other projects that are in the works that we'll see the benefit from. We're still kind of trying to, as a community, figure out our next steps. They asked me if we had anything shovel-ready, um, this month. And I, all I could think about is finishing the, the, um, loop around Lions Park. I just really would like to see that sidewalk complete, cause it's half a mile, so two laps around would be two miles. But with everything, you know, up in the air with the park, I don't think it's the right time for that. So I'm just happy that Five Mile's gonna come back online. But, um, anyway, in that meeting, um, everyone who knows Nancy Dalton knows how amazing she is. She had passed this out to Town Council at her Perraguna, uh, meeting last night. And so she made, she gave it to me to make copies and give them to all of our council here, where she tracked and watched followed bills that she feels we need to all be aware of. And I can have this posted to the packet from the minutes if anyone in the community just wants to see highlights of what she identified as things that affect our area. But a lot of people working really hard together and appreciate you being part of it as a community and, um, your patience with us as we work through these hard, these hard decisions. And I tell people all the time, email, email City Council, email me, email the city manager. I hope that you will. Um, that really does help us and we, your input does matter. Um, the pickleball stuff is hard, you know? It's now the noise thing. And that's, and we're not gonna have enough courts. And then today I got one that if it wasn't indoors, it wasn't gonna be right. And so I, I did get bids on, on indoor metal building, structures, things like that. I mean, we just, again, we have a lot to think about, a lot to talk about, and a lot to figure out how we could pay for it, if we really want it and the community, um, wants to come together for those things. But I don't have anything else. If we have a, a motion to adjourn-
No.
Oh, we don't. We have, oh, we have a staff update. Oh, we might have closed session.
We need to go into closed session.
Oh, okay.
The intention was to have Stacy on the agenda, and I didn't catch it when we reviewed the draft. We're hoping that you can look at this and then we could just put it on action next time and not go work in inaction, but.
I have it.
Thank you for your work on this. Does anyone have any questions or anything they want to discuss?
Are, is this gonna be put to action then next time?
Yeah, if you guys are comfortable with that.
I'd be fine with that.
We had a pretty good discussion last time about it, so.
I thought so too, you know, I think-
I think it's fine to-
They just put it to action.
And we put, to do the, the midnight fight again.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But, but can you just make it consistent, though, throughout the?
Well, yeah. Well, this is just saying the restaurants can't start selling alcohol till, till noon, and, yeah.
And they have to quit by midnight, right?
Quit by midnight, which, the two restaurants that sell it, both.
Well, before that.
So you'd be able to buy beer at a gas station at like five AM, but not a restaurant till noon?
Is there any advantage or disadvantage of having it that way?
I think the only distinction is, in a restaurant, you're serving alcohol, whereas you're buying it, you're not consuming it on the property. When you buy it, you're gonna take it home and put it in your fridge, right, from a gas station? Whereas at a restaurant, they're actually serving alcohol. So that's the difference, I think, why they're sometimes designated different.
Okay. Does the state not only control these hours?
They used to, which is why we reverted all the state code, and then they put it back open to us.
I'm really surprised that, uh, ABC gave up any control. My experience in getting alcohol, which I've done for a couple, three clients, is like, takes an act of God to get it from them. It's really tough.
So we better have this important information. Usually that's how it happens, right?
Well, that was the concern, is that you have different, the different, um, gas stations. It's not just gas, I think it's mostly gas stations. They're just wondering what, what the consistency is so that they're not, you know, there's not some weird advantage from one to the next, and so we just wanted to-
And then also, I was- If they decide to make it stricter, that's up to the business owner. Okay. Well, thank you for all your hard work. I'm glad you did it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other staff updates? Apartment head updates? Okay, all right. So item number seventeen, closed session if necessary?
Personnel.
Okay, so we will be going into closed session. And we need to make a motion to do so, and it's a roll call vote.
I move that we, uh, move out of the regular City Council into closed session to discuss personnel issue?
Actually, it probably should be the health, welfare-
Okay, the charac- character, profession competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Good night.
Thank you for coming, everyone.
Okay. Need a roll call to start with you. Do you want to start the roll call? Thank you.
Jim Sherlup, aye. Matt Gill, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Burton, aye.
Motion carries.
Addie, Addie, Addie? You probably ought to stay for this. Are we going, are we staying here? We're staying here. We can just stay here. It won't take long.